Moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today, first of all, thankful and grateful that we were able to assemble in these chambers, oh Lord. We ask that by your Spirit that you press upon us that we make good and prudent decisions for the city of Erie and its residents. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of the minutes from the July, oops, no, July 6th meeting and bills for payment on July 22nd and July 29th. Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Okay, I think we were going to have a presentation by Curtis Jones. Is Curtis here, though? If he's not here, we'll catch him next time. Can we have repository sales? We have a gentleman to come up. If you could state your name, your address, and the properties that you're interested in.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Eric Cass. I live at 2737 East 32nd Street. The property I'm looking at is East 33rd Street. Do I do the number, or just?
They're vacant lots where?
Vacant lots, East 33rd Street, both of them.
Between?
Between Byrd and it cuts off to, I think it's East 34th Street. Right in the little spot between Wesleyville and Erie.
Okay, if you could just answer those questions in front of you.
Yes, ma'am. Number one, is the property vacant, or does it have a structure on it? The property is actually vacant. What is my plans or intentions with the property? My intention is to clean up the area and get rid of the poison ivy that is spreading everywhere. I plan on removing the dead trees, garbage, damaging trees, and possibly falling on neighbor's structures, including my own. It's my backyard. I plan on eventually planting more trees, since I love the wooded area and the nature around it. Number three, what condition is the property in? The property is covered in poison ivy and dead trees. However, there's many animals, like deer and turkey and wild animals, so I don't want to destroy their land or their habitat. I just want to make it better for them. And then, do you live near the property? It's in my backyard. And number five, how will you provide for maintenance of the property, such as responsibilities? Number five, as I stated in number two and number three, I don't really want to destroy it or anything like that. It's wooded areas, and living in the city of Erie, you know, woods are hard to come by, so it's just a little spot of my heaven, so just want to kind of be able to own it and take care of it, and that's about it, ma'am.
Does anybody on council have any questions? Thank you very much. Laurie, is there anything else you need to tell him?
Nope.
All set. Thank you, ma'am.
You will be voted on next week.
Yes, ma'am. So sit down or stay standing.
You could leave the building if you want.
Understood. Thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak on a repository sale? Last call for repository sales. This takes us to the public comment section. If you could come up and please speak clearly, state your name and your address. And Laurie, we have three people who signed up in advance to speak.
And I have two online who offer to speak.
They're part of the list here?
I think so.
Okay, so the first one we have is Rob Britton. Here's Rob.
Well, good evening, and I'm so glad to be in Pittsburgh. You know, coming from Pittsburgh today, it's good to see my Erie people. I see new people faces on city council, and I want to say welcome. You bring along some youth and some different faces, and I'm really happy to see that tonight. I also want to, I just want to stop by and tell you thank you, guys, particularly Liz. We've been working on the Britton Permanent Memorial. I don't know whether all of you are kind of been updated on that, but we've been working on it now for almost a year, and thank God it's at fabrication now, and I met with the engineers. They were great today. I just got to commend everybody, the Historical Commission. I see they got an ordinance of 16,300 coming up for the funding for them, and boy, I'm all in favor of that, I think, and I want to say thanks to all of the people who made this happen. I know, I don't want to start saying any names, but I like to see Erie working together. And a lot of times, we come up here and we just complain, 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 but it does work, and I want to commend you guys. We're not done yet. I'm trying to get it installed by my father's birthday on August the 17th. So the easement, we discussed the easement today. It's right where the old mall used to be. The property is for sale now, so I don't think the owner, you know, Bowlin Brothers has a sign up there. So in terms of us getting the cooperation of the owner, I know we've been reaching out, the Historical Commission has been reaching out to dialogue with the owner of the property. So I just wanted to come tonight and make sure that we're going to try to get an easement, and it'll come, hopefully it will come before you guys on your next meeting. So if we can expedite that, we would greatly appreciate it, and then I hope on the unveiling on the 17th of August, I just want everyone to come out, particularly my minority community to come out and see some historical black history. And I invite everybody else, once this is opened up, if you have any kind of artifacts or any way you want to tell the story that hasn't been told, and I know Mel and us, we go way back, and a lot of that story is going to get lost when we go. So we're trying to leave a legacy. And God bless you, Mel, you're looking, God bless all you guys. Thank you so much.
Good job. Next, we have Richard Gorski.
Yes, Mr. Britton, I'm here to complain. My name is Richard Gorski. I reside at 1042 East 33rd Street. I'm a 66-year-old resident of Erie all my life, happily retired from a factory, an Army veteran. I missed the last meeting. I was attending the school board meeting, asking them why, when they have $30 million in reserve, $80 million in stimulus, why they need to raise my taxes, okay? No answer. Now they got a 17% increase, more money to solve their problems. So I will be back in front of the board in August to ask them to appeal that or to freeze the property tax, because apparently they don't need the money. If you look at this chart, 2015, okay, and that's before Doll Camper in Pluto just gave us another raise in taxes. Out of 50 counties, Erie County has the highest taxes, property tax. You talk $3,600 a year on $100,000 assessment, that's $300 a month, you know? They just don't believe in stopping, okay? And not only that, down the road, the city reassessment with inflation, all of our houses improved in value, right? 15, 20, 30,000. Well, when the new reassessment comes, guess what's going to happen with the city, the county, and the school? Oh yeah, we're going to get it all three times, okay? Budgets are yearly, survival is long-term. I project a five-year, $5 million deficit. How? You hire 30 more people, 30 more officers, okay? After five years, they make $90,000 plus benefits in healthcare and that, so you figure $100,000 per officer. 10, that's a million, 20, that's 2 million, 3, that's 3 million. A million dollars for security here at City Hall, and another million for all the other city workers that probably entitled to a raise in healthcare. That'll be $5 million. And what's going to happen in that five years? The water lease money's going to be gone, the stimulus money's going to be gone, you're not going to get no federal grant money, because we're under $100,000, okay? And the mayor's going to be gone, so it's not going to be his problem. The mayor and the city council paid a consulting firm $180,000 to analyze the city's financial problems in the past, okay? Salaries, healthcare, and everything. Firm is being paid $180,000. The result was, what did they tell the mayor and the administration? Shrink, shrink, shrink city operations. Find new revenue, control overtime, not hire more people and have another surcharge on stormwater, okay? Okay, stormwater sewer fee. As we sit here today, the governor's sitting on $3 billion in a rainy day fund, $2 more billion federal reserve money, which has to be spent, or he has to give it back to the federal government, okay? $5 billion. June 27th, according to Democratic House Appropriation Committee, the Commonwealth of Erie, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania carries a $4.8 billion revenue surplus. He doesn't need to have a sewer fee. He's got plenty of money sitting down in Harrisburg. Him and Brent Davis and everybody else got to go down there and get our taxpayer money. We don't, we don't need no more service charges and fees for the city. You know, the city's got a tough time. You got us older people dying, younger people ain't staying, because there's not really too much here, and you're going to keep people from moving into the city, you know? So... So in closing, the mayor with the city council have a fiduciary responsibility to be fiscally responsible for the taxpayers' money, especially the mayor, because he worked in a financial institution and has to be accountable and held at a higher standard because of his education. So I thank you for your time, and I'll probably see you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Is Bob Kaiser here, or is he online? Oh, hi, Bob. Thank you. Sorry I didn't see you there.
I'm going to be kind of quick, so. My name is Bob Kaiser. I am currently the fourth owner of Lake Shore Industries. It's a company that's been in business since 1908.
Bob, just give your address, too, though, okay?
We're located at 1817 Poplar Street, which is the same location that the business has started in. We're an aluminum foundry. We make street signs, historical markers, castings, cemetery markers, and a variety of different signs. I have 15 full-time employees that work for me. I would like to bring to council's attention the importance of the Erie redevelopment program and how this program helped me purchase and keep this company in Erie. These programs offer low-interest loans, which helps the banks by spreading the risk. These programs are essential for keeping businesses in Erie. I would also like to thank all of you on city council for approving my loan. I would also like to thank Chris Groner from the Erie Redevelopment Authority. Without Chris's help, this would not have been possible. I would also like to thank Marquette Bank, specifically John Patsy and Julie Swin. Without their help, their help was very important in closing this deal. Without these types of programs, Lake Shore Industry would have been sold to a Canadian company that would have dismantled the company, sold the assets, 15 families would have been out of business, and you would have lost 10 tax properties off your tax records. This is how important these programs are, and they must continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the people who signed up in advance, so now we can go to the people in the audience, and then we'll do the ones online.
Good evening. My name is Howard Bibbs. I reside at 2931 Chestnut Street here in Erie. I'm just here to recap on some things I didn't have the opportunity to get to. One is the drain water, whatever fee that the gentleman was talking about. And the other is also about the sewer fee. Now, through some of the information that I have shared, I want council to understand the information that I have shared with council is right in the computer, which I mentioned. The municipal plan is there, and the code is also there. And you guys know I'm strictly a code person. Per the code, as well as the municipal office, I mean, the Municipal Act, in that act, it has a paragraph about fiscal responsibility, and what is stated, which I did, I had the chance to talk with Mr. Nelson, he called me after the last meeting, and I shared this with him, and I hope he shared it with you guys, that there comes a time when monies need to be managed or accounted for, not only through the city, but it's necessary to go through the preternitary office and keep up with and mark each period of time when money is being put into a certain plan. That has not been done. As far as the water thing, the storm drain, one thing that I've noticed, I don't know if council have noticed, anytime the mayor come to council, is when he just can't run off and do what he wants to do. All right? So that means when he comes to you guys, that means if you look at the Municipal Act, in these situations with that drain water thing, it recommends that there should be a drain water authority. Without being an authority, everything is at cost. You don't, I mean, you're not saving the residents of Erie any money if you're going to charge us when we already paying a fee for this and a fee for that, and you're going to charge us another fee. But if this goes through, you guys got to say yea or nay. The only time he comes to you guys is when you guys got to say, well, Howard Bibbs, you got to pay this, the citizen of Erie, you guys got to pay this. That's the only time he comes to you guys. Other than that, he's like, I know you guys done seen little kids when they deal with cookies in a platter, they put their hands over two cookies, and then the parents say, kid would say, can I have these cookies? The parents say, you already got them, just take them, and then they'll put their hands on another cookie. All right? Now, I know that might sound funny, but that's the method that I am coming up with to explain what is going on here. With the power invested within whoever, people got municipal powers. Do you guys have municipal powers? I'd like to know them. Do city council have municipal powers? Then I don't know how all these other committees are sitting around doing this, doing that. When you guys got the municipal power, when it come talking to that, about that water, this committee that you guys are waiting to ask questions to, they don't exist. They're not even supposed to exist. They can exist if they're talking about putting a hole or something in these walls, fixing what's going on in the city, or redevelopment or something like, but when it comes to water, they do not exist. All I'm saying is you guys got to read the Municipal Act, and you can also, if you read the Municipal Act, you can find the other part. There's like, there's like two Municipal Acts, and then there's another thing about the codes. Now, everybody goes away from the codes. Now, the one thing that I don't like is how landlords are being made responsible to pay for something that they're not supposed to be paying for. If it's not my responsibility to collect something, it's not my job. It's not my job, okay? That's not my job. But now, if I'm going to be forced to do something, and there's going to be a charge of money against me, that becomes, that becomes, there's a legal term for it. All I know, you're breaking the law by doing it that way. That's the only thing I can tell you. That becomes something, when you, when you force a person to do something that's not their responsibility, but you're going to, you're going to put a law on them saying, if you don't pay this, we're going to put a lien on your house. You put a lien on my house, you messing with my credit? You messing with my sale of my house? Yeah, I know.
Next, next time, continue that thought.
I'm going to get you, too. You didn't call me, but that's okay, too. But Mr. Peters, or whatever his name, Nelson, he called me, okay? But you guys got to read that Municipal Act, because there's things in there that says what can be done and what cannot be done. And right now, you need an authority to do whatever he's talking about doing with this year, with this drain thing. Should be an authority, if you guys going to vote on it, it has to come from you guys. And stop just letting him walk in here and just tell y'all, oh, I did this, and that's it.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Fred Attefra. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie, and I actually do think it's high time the city has a stormwater plan and assesses the fee, but that's not what I got up here to say. Item seven and eight under new business is a considerable amount of money in multimodal funds for traffic and pedestrian improvements on West 8th Street and Fifth through Second, which is kind of incidentally almost about the exact area of the Erie Downtown Development Corporation. I know that a lot of public involvement went into the project on West 8th Street, and I don't begrudge that, and I gave my share. I don't know what public involvement went into deciding to spend all that money on the almost completely Erie Downtown Development Corporation area on State Street, but I'm grateful that we now finally have accessible pedestrian signals, at least on part of Perry Square. It should have been there when they upgraded those traffic signals in the first place, and my understanding is that came out of a Public Works Maintenance budget? Why is there no ARP money? Why is there no funding going into upgrading our traffic signals so that they are safe for pedestrians? I do work with Leanne Parmenter quite a bit, and we helped write some letters supporting grants that she's putting in for, for accessible pedestrian signals and other improvements, but she's only trying to do it on the low-hanging fruit, the ones that don't cost as much money to install. But I would like to see some ARP money, some money, some planning effort, going into looking at what does it take to make our accessible resources accessible to everybody? You have, on West 10th Street, where you're going to put a separate bike lane, you have multiple intersections with traffic lights with no ped buttons at all, much less accessible pedestrian signals. Also, in the universe of traffic, it looks like this IRG project is on some kind of fast track with very little public opportunity to say anything, but what it points out is that there's going to be a whole lot of trucks coming through town, and this city does not seem to have any kind of traffic mitigation ordinance, any traffic mitigation regulation or process or mitigation fees. I sent some of you an email that Lancaster, which I believe is the same kind of city as us has, so maybe it's too late for the IRG, maybe it isn't, but the city should have a traffic mitigation ordinance. They should make developers, the people who are going to be having projects that significantly affect the traffic in the city, demonstrate how much traffic there is. They should be putting money into helping to take the cost of the maintenance, the street that it's going to cost, the upgrading the traffic signals. Also, are we considering the noise? There are people who live around where all those trucks are. Have we even looked at the noise that there is going to be in the hours of operation? Anyway, I really encourage you folks to do what is needed to be done to move forward to have a traffic mitigation process in the city. Thank you.
My name is Cole Shenley, and I live at 615 Ohio Street, Erie, PA. I'm here tonight to talk to you about policing in Erie, a subject matter you've heard myself and others speak on with some frequency as of late. I've brought a couple of handouts, one of which is from the writer Alec Katsanis, who regularly covers how policing is portrayed by the media and journalists. He asks a number of questions that public officials should be confronting police chiefs about, specifically around data and strategy. Some of my speech covers questions three and five, but I did want to bring up question 11 and how the city plans on responding if, God forbid, Doug Mastriano wins the governor's race this year. You may find the question of how Chief Spizani plans on executing laws around abortion, contraception, and sodomy to be vulgar, but it is nonetheless important to know where the police stand on such issues. As far as I know, you are all elected Democrats, and whatever your personal beliefs, abortion access, LGBTQIA issues, and women's health are cornerstones of the party, so voters should know where you and the mayor stand on this issue. I also want to dive deeper into the mayor's strategy around policing and why I find it backwards. The mayor wants police more involved in domestic violence calls, even though police officers are as likely as civilians to be perpetrators of domestic violence, if not even more likely. To be clear, this is not to say that all police are violent abusers, but simply that they possess no special skills in regards to solving disputes around domestic violence. They are as fallible and human as the rest of us. One need only look at a former corporal of the Erie Police that went to jail earlier this year for assaulting his wife. The mayor wants more police involved in working with the homeless population and mental health crisis cases, even though that's the exact wrong way of approaching both problems. The city could use Denver's STAR program as a model for dealing with these tough situations. The program uses EMTs and behavioral health clinicians to respond to 911 calls that relate to people with substance abuse problems, mental health issues, poverty, and homelessness. According to Joe Mail's article in Jacobin, Denver has seen a 34% drop in low-level crime equalling 1,400 fewer instances of trespassing, drug use, petty theft, and other nonviolent offenses. By committing to the STAR program, Denver's police force has been able to focus more on actual policing. on actual policing rather than being forced into the role of social workers. The mayor wants more police to deal with young people, hoping that they can stem the rash of juvenile police, juvenile violence that has broken out in the city. Tonight's agenda includes a resolution that calls for investing money into Roger Young Park, one of the East Side's largest parks and a place that has been in disrepair for far too many years. The mayor, his chief of staff, and even some members of council are balking at such an investment, saying that more time is needed to consider the issue. I spoke several weeks ago about how the poorest deserve the best, but clearly the mayor disagrees as he's willing to give out bonus money to an already wealthy police force, but not help invest in one of Erie's most struggling communities. And as a person who grew up on the East Side of Erie and now lives on the West Side, I'm aware of the economic disparity that exists between those two places. Why is it that the mayor, the police administration, and some members of city council think that keeping a boot on the neck of Erie's multiracial working class is the price for improving the city in other areas? Are tourist and county dollars so important that fighting poverty and investing in education, two actual silver bullets for reducing crime, should get shafted financially? Our city deserves better than failed, bigoted policies from the nineteen nineties to help stop crime, especially when the mayor makes such a show of wanting to end racism in Erie. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Deacon Barry Clark. My residence is twenty thirty-five East Nineteenth Street, and first and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys for the wonderful job that you're doing. Ditto what that gentleman just said. I live in that neighborhood where Roger Young Park is. I'm coming to every city council meeting until y'all spend some money on my street. I see money going all over Erie. Everybody's arguing about where this money goes here, this money goes there. I wanna see some money go to the residents that live in the city of Erie. My street hasn't been worked on in forty years since Joyce Savaccio. It's time for a change. That's all I gotta say.
Good evening. My name is Roderick Jones. I live at twenty-eight eleven Wayne Street in Erie, Pennsylvania. I'm here tonight concerning the park at Roger Young. I hear Mr. Keys has proposed the renovation of a sports park out there. I'm the commissioner of Metro Twenty-one Youth Football. This is my second time here. And I know you might can nod your heads, or not nod your heads, or have any type of dialect with me, but if you are planning on doing a football park and other sports venues there, we have upwards of four hundred kids in Metro Twenty-one in the football program. Wouldn't you think that maybe somebody would have came and talked to us to get our input about if it's gonna be football there? If you're gonna be a football, football has the most kids in the city. We know we have the biggest program in the city, but no one's talked to us about it. And if you're gonna fund the field, how can you not fund the kids that are gonna play on that field? Like I said before, no one in this city privately or publicly gives Metro Twenty-one a dime. I see you smiling. I see you smirking. It may not mean nothing to you, but I'm out there. And I've never seen a city councilman at one of our football games, other than Mr. Witherspoon when he refs games, but you guys don't come. You don't care about these kids like that. You know why I know? Because I'm there. I've been doing this thirty years. Thirty years. And I've been there. It's time for you guys to act like the kids that's out there matter. You have a PAL, which is the Police Athletic League. Now, we have almost four hundred boys, young boys, in our league. Why wouldn't the Police Athletic League come and try and have some type of relationship with those boys that would be, maybe would get in trouble, or hopefully they don't get in trouble? But if you have that type of dialect or some type of conversation with these kids, maybe it would help down the road. But no one's coming out there talking to these kids. We can't even get security officers to even have security for our games out there. And I know you might smile and smirk, but at the end of the day, a lot of those kids in that league look just like you. That are susceptible to all the things in this world, and in this country, and in this city that look just like you. If you're gonna fund a field, why can't you fund some kids? And let these kids, these kids have to pay to play in our league because we have to pay for insurances, we have to pay for uniforms, we have to pay for referees, and a lot of these things, after, that's all said and done, it comes out of our pocket. We've been doing this for almost thirty years. My son sits back here. He comes from Toledo, Ohio, every weekend during football season to help us out with this league. But nobody in the city is helping us out. We have the largest program in this city. Are you hearing me? We have the largest youth foot, sports program in this city, and these kids are not getting any support. The young lady sitting on there, Mrs. Flores, I believe your mother came in the other day. She said her daughter, now, I may be wrong, but she said her daughter sits on city council, and she signed a child up for football. Now, I don't know if that was you or not, but that's what she said. She may have lied, I don't know.
It might be my younger brother, Emilio, I'm not sure. He's busy, so.
Okay, well, well, they came. Okay, so we'll expect to see you when we play in our games this year.
I know you said they were on Sundays, correct?
Every game we have is on Sunday. I'm glad you paid attention to that.
I'm glad you're in the stadium.
I'm glad you're listening. But do this for the good of these kids, and if you're gonna put a park out there for football, Mo, you know, you're sitting there looking at me, you know what I do. You know we've been doing football out here. Y'all need to act like we doing something positive for these kids, and we don't do it for no money. We don't do it for the show. We do it for the love of these kids, and I'll be there until I die. I'll be there until I die. So why don't you guys maybe come while you're living? God bless.
I echo the sentiments of everybody that spoke before. I appreciate my community members. My name is Divana Paisley. I live at one four one six West Eleventh Street. First, I just wanna say that I know that we prayed in the very beginning of this, and I come from the church and I understand prayer, but I just feel like it's interesting that we can pray, but we can't give land acknowledgement to the people that lived on this earth and on this land before we came here. So what I'm gonna do is I'm first doing acknowledge that, and then I'm gonna go into what I have to say. So first, I wanna acknowledge this land that we reside on, and this land is of the Erie people, and I pay my respects to the elders and the people that lived on here before us and who are currently here. I'm here today to highlight the importance of our water. I know that a community member spoke about the importance of our water before, but I wanna highlight the sentiments that that person spoke about. A few weeks ago, I was with my wife, and we were on the, talking on the water and on the bay, and we were eating, and we met a couple ladies that were also here. And at that time, it was an interesting conversation because we talked and discussed the beauty that we have of the lake. And one of the ladies said something really significant to me, and she said, I don't think that Erie folk understand how good they've got it. That really sat with me. I had to really, that really, that took, for a moment, I had to really take back like what she meant. For me, I think that sometimes we take for granted the water that we do have on our earth and the water that we are residing alongside. Water is very sacred. Water is very, is very important to our community and our environment. It goes a little deeper, but you can Google that. Basically, what I want is us to recognize the beauty that we do have on this earth and the beauty that we do have in our city, being next to the water. And I want to basically point out that I know I see that there's money that's going to be coming from the American Rescue Plan, where we were designated five million dollars. I see that as a new business on here, number four, of basically money going into public spaces, and so that there's more livability and the quality of life is better. While I do echo the sentiments of the East Side needing money as well for cleaning and for the sidewalks and for the roads that are shitty, I'm sorry, I really want us to also focus on the water as well. I was down by the water with my wife, and I saw so much filth, not only on the streets and on the pavement, but I saw in the water, the pollution, and that is concerning to me. I know that we think that it's just, oh, it's just water, but no, like, we drink that, you know? We bathe in that. And I know that it does go to get clean, but I think the importance for me is it being clean even before it has to go to the plant. While I do want to address y'all who are city council, you know, holding yourselves accountable and creating really ways that we can have more accessibility towards the water and other things that we can do that are, that's your job, to think about other ways that we can make the water clean, make the sidewalks clean and clean up. I also urge the city, the Erie City members and people who are living in our community, while I am so grateful to see all of us patron these areas and take part of the green spaces that are there, I think it's really important to pick up your trash and pick up things that you know should not be on the ground. That is where it starts. I know that we want the city council and we want local government to do these things, but sometimes we have to take things in our own hands and our own control. And that's where I've been at my, in the last couple of years, from recognizing that I have to also do my part. So while I urge Erie County members, I also urge city council to find creative ways and support one another when it comes to money and funding going into our city as far as livability and public spaces and things being clean, because that's really important. I'm sorry, I don't know about you, but I don't wanna be in the park, sitting down and having a good time and seeing trash everywhere, or at the water and seeing trash everywhere. I just think that looks not good. It just looks, we have too many people coming into our city, tourists and people that are living here in our city, that want a clean and safe space for all of us. So, yeah, that's my sentiments. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Marla Roebuck, and I reside at forty-two eleven Lake Pleasant Road. Before I start, can I make a suggestion to the council? Because I am new to the area, I came in, I signed up, and I thought there was a procedure, if you sign the sheet in the back, that you would be called forth. Well, that obviously is not happening, so if you can put a sheet down there to let us know what to do if we come to these councils, council meetings. But I thank you for the opportunity to come and speak before you. Due to work and/or the lateness of this meeting, my neighbors couldn't be here with me, but they are definitely behind me for my reason for being here. I've been visiting Erie for more than thirty, thirty-five years. We brought a play up here. From that play, I've developed relationships, I have friends, those friends turned into family. But my, my reason for being here, I'm here because I have a concern around motorists who are speeding and speed racing on my street. I've been an Erie resident for less than eleven months, and I love the city, but I do not care for the excessive speeding that is on my street, on Lake Pleasant Road, or any of the intersecting streets in my neighborhood. Just to mention, the day that I was showing my friends my new home in Erie, we were almost in an accident at the intersection of Lake Pleasant and Pine Avenue. Thank goodness the driver was driving defensively and we avoided that crash. Every day, I hope and I pray that there is not a tragedy on my street, especially, especially not on my block or in front of my home. After dusk, the street assimilates a drag racing strip. Just a few months back, I was in my yard, I saw a truck pass me. He was not speeding. A few moments later, I heard the loudest crash that I've ever probably heard, quickly went to the intersection and viewed a terrible scene. The female driver of the car was being removed from her vehicle and then transported to the hospital. I saw evidence of that accident daily before they resurfaced Pine Avenue recently. I still, I'm still hoping that that was not life-threatening because of the magnitude of that crash. I have six children and ten dogs just on my block. I hope none are hit from speeding motorists. My block also has seniors like myself who must cross over the street to retrieve our mail. It's dangerous trying to do that daily task. Another reason it's difficult is there is a slight hill, and I must raise up in my SUV in order to see if there's a vehicle coming, so I can quickly turn into my driveway, because they do not have that extra, other motorists do not have that extra height to see oncoming vehicles. I do have pictures on my phone to show that intersection. I'm requesting that speed bumps, stop signs, caution signs be positioned on, and a traffic light be placed on Lake Pleasant and Pine Avenue before we have a fatal accident. I thank you in advance for your time in tending to this great concern of mine and other residents.
Good evening, City Council. Edison Nicholson, I reside at two thirty-three East Thirtieth Street. I'm here to support the resolution that's been put forth by Ms. Flores and Mr. Keys. I just wanna commend you guys for putting forth this type of resolution. It really would do a great service for that area. One of the things that I want to bring to your attention, or everybody's attention, is the fact that, and I, it's called the broken window theory. The concept is that each problem, each thing or problem that goes unattended or unaddressed in a neighborhood, it causes environmental concerns or environmental problems. And these environmental problems and concerns lead to violence in the neighborhood and other criminal mischief. And so, basically, what it's saying is if we fix the problem in our neighborhoods, then these types of problems, these environmental concerns will disappear. And so, what we are doing here is indirectly solving the problem that we have nationwide as far as violence. We seen this, we seen this in play when Playground came to Twenty-third and Holland a while back through the leadership of Bishop Dwayne Brock. We also seen this when the Spoons League came to our area, and so we seen this play out. Recently, I got an opportunity to tour the Susan Hurt Hagan Core Building over at Penn State Baron. I walked into the facility and I was just taken away by it. I mean, I couldn't believe what I was seeing. I mean, the scenery and the building, I mean, it was just magnificent. I mean, I was sitting there saying, as I got into my car and I was leaving, I said, wow, what if there were some young people that can actually see something like this in our hood? Why do we gotta go way over to Penn State Baron to see something like this? I mean, the place was just, I couldn't believe it. But if we had something like that in our hood, and I think it starts with what you guys are putting forward, you know, we can make this the Susan Hurt Hagan Center for our young people, and they should be able to see something like this. And so, again, I just wanna commend you guys for putting this forward. I know it's challenging anytime that you want to bring about change, there's always opposition. And so, I just wanna commend you and tell you to keep on keeping on.
Hello. Molly Brechtel, eight twenty Cranberry Street. We consistently hear from the Administration and Police Department that reinstating their juvenile unit is a must to combat juvenile crime and part of a broader public safety initiative that would cost fourteen point two million dollars. On Monday, Chief Parnarsley once again reiterated, quote, "My..." On Monday, Chief Spernarzli once again reiterated, quote, "Minor crimes aren't being addressed. We just don't have the manpower or resources, resources to answer these calls. You want to interrupt these kids from doing the same thing over and over. If they are out stealing, mind you, in a city that has thirty-six percent child poverty and not being stopped, it just creates more of a problem down the road where they feel empowered to go to the next step, which rather than stealing, may be assaulting people." A study in two thousand twenty found absolutely no correlation between crime rates and police funding. We now know that better and more, it's better and more cost-effective place, uh, we now know that the better and more cost-effective place to stop the cradle to prison pipeline is early intervention. Early intervention prevents the onset of delinquent behavior and supports the development of a youth's assets and resilience. While many past approaches focus on remediating invisible and/or longstanding disruptive behavior, research has shown that prevention and early intervention are more effective. Sound delinquency prevention programs can save seven to ten dollars for every dollar invested, primarily due to the amount spent on incarceration. Intervening early not only saves young lives from being wasted, but also prevents onset of adult criminal careers, reduces the likelihood of youth perpetrating serious and violent offenses. The Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency champions research-based approaches, including the blueprints for healthy developments. Intervention certified by the blueprints are family, school, and community-based and target all levels of need. These programs have been proving successful in preventing violence and setting our youth up for success. We agree with Mayor Schember as Chief Spernarzli that we have the opportunity to make a transformative impact and ensure that our youth's lives are enriched and that those who suffer from addiction, mental and behavioral health issues, domestic abuse and housing insecurity are getting the services they need. We disagree on the approach prioritizing millions in COVID funds to the Erie Police Department. The community rejected status quo solutions at the June fifteenth city council meeting. We demanded fund root causes of violence such as poverty and trauma, fund mental health services, community violence prevention efforts, and our youth. We applaud council members Nelson, Flores, Keys, and Brzezinski for passing a resolution that prevents a tax increase and calls for city council input into remaining ARP funds. We also applaud council member Keys, council member Nelson, or council member Flores for their resolutions tonight to invest in Roger Young Park and invest in our youth. We also reject attempts to divide and attack the community, silence our voices and avoid public input and decisions that impact us. Community members were attacked for being anti-police, disrespected by certain city council members, council members that voted for the resolution republically and unfairly attacked by the Fraternal Order of Police alleging defunding, which we know is not true, ignoring pleas to curb violence, and not representing their constituents. We must have been at two separate council meetings because two-thirds of public comment I watched and counted. Two-thirds of public comment came from constituents, was against additional hires, and this margin was reflected in those seated in the seats. Misrepresentations about laying off new hires were also made public. We were told life and death matters were in city council's hand. Together, we can provide the best solutions to the challenges our city is facing. Just give the community a seat at the table.
Good evening, council. My name is Kathy Shoff. I live at twenty-four thirty-seven East Forty-third Street. I want to thank you for your commitment to the city as a whole, the young, the old, and the in-between. Thank you for your dedication to our city. I first want to talk about how thankful I am that Public Works has such a great fountain at Perry Square on the east side. Today at four-thirty, there were about a hundred people there and many of them, children running through the jet water. And I took my shoes off, I put my feet in, and I got my hands in, and I was a part of that cooling down period too, when it's ninety degrees out. So I'm so grateful to their commitment of clean water because they have to make sure that that water is clean for everyone. I also, um, am here to talk about Amerisala, which is this Saturday, July twenty-third, and Lynn Johnson is heading it up, and he has received a lot of help from public funding to have this event. The last time we had it was in two hundred nineteen, it was ninety degrees. Looks like it's going to be ninety degrees on this Saturday too. There's going, um, it starts at eleven at Perry Square, there's going to be a parade, uh, that Tam Tam will lead at noon, and after the noon parade, it's just a very short and it's not like this grand parade, but it's a great parade, um, just from Fourth Street on up to Perry Square, like around Perry Square. Afterwards, there will be music from various bands until, I believe, five or six o'clock PM. Um, he has gotten children involved, um, I don't know the specific organizations that have been creating masks and caricatures and things for the parade, so thankful to all of the people involved there and hope to see you on Saturday. Because music and dance does transcend these crazy times that we live in and has through all the periods of the United States. Um, you can be free, lose yourself, and be at peace when there's music and when there's dance. I also want to thank, uh, the people who have put a butterfly garden on, uh, this side of City Hall. I know it's been a couple of years in the making, but this year it's absolutely really beautiful, and if you stand there and watch the butterflies, you don't even know that you're in the city sometimes. It's, it's a really nice, it's really small, but it's, it's really nice. Um, I do want to address, um, the Roger Young Park, and I, uh, played at that park as a youngster. I was allowed to ride my bike down there at times and, um, am familiar with the need for that. Having said that, and the need, I hope that you are aware of the survey needs. At the present time, I am reading this book, and I can't remember the name of it, but the woman from the South Bronx who worked her way out of this, um, into doing something but still lived there, and she always talks about the needs of the people and the ability to survey the people when, um, you have a need to improve. And so like the gentleman talked about Metro twenty-one, I think there does need to be a dialogue. Perhaps it could be an outdoor, uh, thing where the people go to the fields and just have like a public discourse. And, um, I do want, um, to say too, that, you know, maybe have the soccer fields and the pool and the football fields, but maybe no track. Just because, my husband did tell me that he could say, that I could say this, he walks by the east track three times a week during the school time, yes, there are school students who use the track. In the summer, it's like dead, maybe one person, and I have seen that too, because every once in a while, I used to be able to walk with him. So, um, I don't know about the top track that's at the central, and I used to be a gym teacher at Saint James, and we had a track, it's not like standard one, but we had a lot of incidences with kids falling, and we had a cinder track and tore up their legs and their knees and was a mess. I had so much more to say, but I guess my time is up. Thank you.
Monty Davis, ten twenty-five East Thirty-sixth Street. I'm glad I came up after her because I wanted to reiterate on the whole Roger Young track thing. We definitely need a track, but we don't just need a track. That's what we got wrong at the Vet Stadium, it wasn't even four hundred meters. Then we tried again at Belinda Cof, they're running on coal. Then we tried again at East. The reason why her husband doesn't see anybody running is because you can't run on it. It's, it's cement. It's like running on a bad sidewalk. I'd rather go out to Frontier. Um, just to give you a little background, I've been involved in sports since I played them, and I've been coaching them every since. Thirty years I've been putting in in the inner city. I've been everywhere from Villa, Prep, Iroquois, I've done track, football, Metro, twenty-one, Bay City, Prep League, whatever's going on, I'm involved. Um, I trained a lot of people's kids that are in here today, still do, and I've trained their parents before them. We don't have a facility. We don't want a track. We got tracks, those, those tracks, they won't, they won't influence athletes. We develop athletes, right now I train three Division One athletes, they're just not on the team, they all start. We got athletes from everywhere, from Seneca all the way across to Harbor Creek. This summer I was able to go to Union City, track meet, northeast, track meet, Harbor Creek, track meet, Iroquois, track meet, if you guys are understanding what I'm saying, everywhere but here for some odd reason. Now, I'm not gonna go to the finger pointing, I'm a pioneer like, like Mel Witherspoon. I don't mind making my own money. We just need the opportunity. If we had a facility, track is the beginning of what we could do there. Just like Roderick said, he has four hundred plus kids in football, so we have a football facility there. My, me, myself, I coached the Erie Lake Effect. We're a national accredited track team. Most of you guys haven't heard of them, heard of us because there's no track local. When we go local and we run, everybody's, whoa, where those little Olympians come from? Right now we have ten kids qualified for the National Junior Olympics, the biggest sporting events in America besides the regular Olympics. Nobody knows, the news, they don't go to track meets. They don't, they don't video the fastest person in the city. They don't do District Ten. None of you saw a clip of anybody racing this past track season. All you see is posts from proud parents. Track is a family sport. You won't see a lot of people on the track by themselves unless they're just diehards. What you'll see is a grandmother with a grandchild, or her grandson, or her granddaughter, and a dog, and a cart, and a bucket, and some food, and some drinks because it's family-oriented. It's one of the only sports where you'll see generations at the same time. Grandma didn't play football, but she ran track. Granddad may have played football with a little track, and then the kids all reap the same benefits. What Erie is gonna do is we're gonna wait until they get it in Fairview, or they get it in Summit, and everybody's gonna go up there all year round. We go year round. We go year round competition. You know why you never heard? Because there's no facility. We go out to Edinburgh, I take eight-year-olds and nine-year-olds to Edinburgh during school year at seven-thirty at night to practice under the dome. Their parents let me do it, and we practiced till nine o'clock. No dinner, no bedtime, everybody's breaking their neck to get back in the city because we don't have a facility. In high school, if any of you know track or your brothers and sisters ran, we ran the hallways. When winter time comes, track is done, only here, not there. What we've been doing is, we've been bending that curve from Florida to Texas where they say Ohio, Florida, Texas, those are the places for track. Right now, Pennsylvania is on that list. Because I'm going year round, we're going indoor out in Edinburgh, we're going indoor in the Booker T, indoor at E two A two, all the way out on Iroquois Ave. Iroquois locked their doors to their, their track, it was public, they locked their doors. Harbor Creek locked their doors, it's public. Anything organized, when they see you come, they stop you at the gate, you're organized, can't be here. Doesn't matter if we carry insurance, doesn't matter how we conduct ourselves. But the Roger Young investment is something you need to sit down and really put some thought into because it's gonna be prosperous for years to come. Thirty years in, we want thirty years with the track, and we'll have some Olympians here, okay?
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Zachary Sharif. Uh, I could've gave him some of my time, I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but, uh, uh, first and foremost, I wanna, my address, twenty-seven oh-two East Avenue. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone serving in, uh, city council. Often it's not easy, you know, you have to listen to, uh, what everybody has to say, but as an elected official, that's the responsibility when you're elected by the people. So, is, if anybody knows me, I'm all for the betterment of, I'm here to advocate for youth betterment and community, uh, to make our community better. And you hear about the Roger Young Park all day, and I lived in that area for twenty-four years, played basketball there, and what, what he said about just not just track, and, you know, I have a colleague in mind, we talk about like, you know, what, what there needs to be done in Roger Young Park. Of course, a lot of improvement, however, one of the things that we always have conversation about, community pool. So if you look at many other places, they have a community pool where actually families can come and swim. We don't have that in the city. So, so, I'm not, I'm not saying what's going on in the West Bay, friend, it's not about competition, but what, when it comes down to the east side, I, I, I often hear other people say they feel like left out. So the, the opportunity is now, the money is here, so, you know, think, you shouldn't have to think twice because it's all about the youth. Many people already spoke about, you know, kids are playing football, there's not even lines for the kids to play, you know, and, uh, it's not even even, it's not all even. So kids are playing, easy to get, get injured. So I'm just here to support anything that has to do with the Roger Young, Roger Young Park, and I think you guys should definitely consider a community pool because it's well needed. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Selena King, eight forty-eight East Twenty-fifth Street. Um, I'm coming to you today as chairwoman of the Erie Democratic Black Caucus as where, as well as an executive member of the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus Foundation. Um, I am a parent, um, first and foremost tonight, which is why I'm speaking. Um, I have children who have played at the Roger Young Park, and, um, after speaking to a few council meeting, uh, council members privately, I wanted to make everyone aware of a few things about that park and what we could do to make this project happen. Um, first and foremost, um, the National Institute of Health in two thousand nine talked about a protective factor of athletic sports being one protective factor that prevents students from suicide, from issues of having low self-esteem, and also from violence. We've seen violence be an issue that has become something that's out of control, that we cannot handle ourselves, and that's why we, as the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus and the Foundation, and also the Pennsylvania Democratic House Policy Commission, is hosting a hearing here on August twenty-third, um, on violence prevention and intervention to deal with that issue. And so if we're concerned about violence, we have to talk about protective factors, so much so that we had an organization called Unified Erie that talked about religiosity being a protective factor, talked about social issues being protective factors. So if we want to deal with those issues, we have to talk about what protective factors can we have, and sports are big issues that we can use and that are things that are And sports are big issues that we can use and that are things that our children are involved in. I have a son that graduated from Cathedral Prep in 2021, who is now a Division One track athlete, student athlete at Duquesne University. We never knew he could do track. I put him in Cathedral Prep for academics, and then he went and was a member of the 2021 basketball team. Did track one year, decided to jump. We thought he was a sprinter. He is now doing triple jump and long jump at Duquesne. We've had to travel all across Pennsylvania in order for him to jump. Even now, while he's home trying to train in between seasons, it's hard for him to find a pit. We go to Erie High, he goes to McDowell. But the ugly truth about it is, him being an African-American boy with a huge curly Afro, he's not always welcome at places where people don't look like him. I have a younger son who's now 13, but when he was 11, he was playing for Metro and for the Parochio Football Team, who he still plays for. He had a very serious injury from the divots in that field down at Roger Young. Today, when the Metro 21 Commissioner came, he came by my invitation, because no one had reached out to him. So we also have some communication barriers that we have to discuss. Of course, we can't all do it all, and so I'm not here to point any fingers at all, because it's going to take each and every one of us in order to deal with these issues. So we have to open the lines of communication across the board. I know someone, everyone here knows someone that they can talk to, so that we can find out where the gaps are of inequity. And so equity is an issue. Our students on the East Side deserve exactly what they see at Prep and McDowell and other schools across the district. But again, an ugly truth is, they're not always welcome at McDowell. They're not always welcome at our private institutions. They're not even always welcome at Veteran Stadium, that's supposed to be the stadium for all. And I can say these things, because I have sat on the boards of the organizations where my children have played sports. And I've had to make those calls to be able to secure those athletic facilities, so that they could have those equitable opportunities. As a single parent, I've made serious sacrifices, because that's what you have to do. But to make those sacrifices, decide, am I going to pay this utility bill today so that my children can have cleats, so that we can drive up and down the road, so that they can play in their sports, because we're there in travel sports, so that they can have the best foot forward and to compete on the same playing field as their friends? Not everyone has that opportunity to do that, and they shouldn't have to do that. We have an opportunity to do something great. In 2015, Cathedral Prep opened their now Doolinger Field, and it would cost them $9 million for that track. I know we talked about, we don't have an architectural plan, we didn't know the price tag. I'm telling you how much it cost in 2015. We can look around and see that. We may not have $9 million, you may only be able to contribute $2 million. But in neighboring counties down in Cranberry Township, Dick's Sporting Goods opened up an athletic facility and funded all of that. So there are things that we can do to ensure that this happens, but we have to take a step to do it, and the time is now. We can't wait for tomorrow. Our kids can't wait, because some of these kids may not be here to see it if we don't move now. The neighborhood I live in, every day there are gunshots. At 11:30 this morning, two blocks away from my house, someone was shot. Just over the weekend, people were shot all around us. I don't want to have to see any more kids being buried, because we aren't acting. Like I said, I'm not here to point fingers, but I'm just here to open your eyes to some things that even I didn't know about. These injuries are serious. I know over my time, but the surgery my son had, he's walking around with bungee cords in his leg at 13-years-old, because the injuries he sustained over there at Roger Young. And there are even more that Mr. Jones could tell you about if he had the time today. We need to move. Thank you so much.
Prophetess Teresa Sims. I live at 718 East 21st Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. I've lived in this city going on 66 years. And I have yet to see a change in anything. But I'm hopeful, maybe when I leave, I'll look from heaven and I'll see the change, okay? My problem is today, the code enforcement officer tore down a house that the city wanted him to tear down. In the process of tearing down that house, he tore down my fence, okay? And got smart about it, all right? And I have yet to go on my knees, because I'm coming, okay? And I want my fence back up, because the people he sold the land to, it is now a forest. I got everything in a forest coming in my land. And I can't go outside and enjoy my backyard, okay? He didn't put the fence up, I did, and it cost me $700. And he didn't have the right to tear it down and then walk away and say, "It's up to you." Okay? I want my fence up. I want it to look exactly like it looked when I put it up, when Extreme Makeover came in my neighborhood and I put my fence up. I did, a woman, okay? Not a lady, a woman. I put it up. And then none of y'all give me a dime for it, but your organization tore my fence down. And I want it up. I'm tired of the little animals coming in my yard, snakes and everything else, okay? It's a blown forest next door to me now. Been two years. Now, the next thing is the Hartford, the Richmond, I'm giving you, the Richmond Hotel or apartment building that you got down there. As I told you before, I'm a prophet. And why I was praying, God showed me exactly what you have a desire to do with that property. The money that you gave, I'm not going to say the man's name, because you know who you gave a whole bunch of money to, to build a... He was supposed to build a factory, I mean, a center for the children. Then he was supposed to go, all of a sudden, out of the blue, redo Parade Street. And I said, "Lord, why they redoing Parade Street?" Then he showed me. They want that building, because I remember them saying they wanted to remodel it, but they're not going to put the people who are poor back into a beautiful remodeled building. So before they get the Richmond, they got to put them back where they belong, in their minds, on Parade Street, okay? Now, I paid very close attention, from the time I was a little girl, what goes on in this city. And I don't say much, but I don't like it. Because a spirit that should have been dead a long time ago is still here. And his name is called Jim Crow. Okay? Now, if you want to get angry, you have that conversation with God. Because we're all God's children, made in His image. But see, I'm a prophetess, and what He tells me, He will not lie. The reason your children don't have what they need, Jim Crow. Jim Crow decides what you can have, where you're going to have it at. But I've never lived by Jim Crow. Whatever I wanted in life, I got on my knees, I got it. But it's time for Erie to stop playing, stop pretending, because you know who getting tired? God. And I know you don't like to hear that, but that's my job. That's the work I do, okay? He's my boss. When He tell me to go and say, "I do just that," and I get my reward. He gave me my house on my knees. Every car I drive, He give me that. He put my kids through school, because I work for Him. Now, you other young people that's in here, stop asking mayor. Go to the owner who owns everything, and tell him what you want. You don't have to be saying, "Because I have it built up to the bone."
We do have five minutes for everybody, so she wasn't particularly beeping you.
I haven't been up there five minutes, because I'm looking at my watch.
Everybody gets the five minutes, ma'am.
And I, one more thing I'm going to ask y'all, because you know I work with the homeless people. You don't care about them, I know that. I have one living with me, he's doing, he's thriving. He is thriving. And I'm still waiting for you to come out with me, like you said you would, okay? Now, I have a challenge for all of y'all, because I done asked the mayor already. I want you to take one day, a weekend. I'll pick it out. One night on the street with the poor, just like Jesus did.
Okay, thank you very much. We have some more people to speak.
Abdullah Washington, 327 East 7th Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. Conditioning, conditioning, conditioning. Right? Everyone who's been involved in athletics knows that's the difference between winning and losing. Conditioning. And we look around the city, and people can tell us, their kids, well, they have this thing, and this thing, and that thing. You have these kids and these parents, wheeling their kids all around the county, out of state even, to participate in sports, to have that kind of conditioning that's going to make them winners. Our children have become conditioned to expecting nothing from our leadership in this city for far too long. We're conditioning them to be losers. Now, people have explained to me that the solution to a problem is found within the people presenting the problem. So instead of looking at our youth as the problem, we need to start looking at them as a solution. Looking to them, investing in them directly. Not so much in people who say they have a better idea, but in the children directly. And until these children see that direct investment, the type of investment that the Roger Young Park plan represents, they have no reason to trust anything that we say or we do. And if we're planning for the future of our city, we have to start with the hopes and dreams of those children. We've had a lot of athletic success in Erie over the years. We, sports people in Erie, have contributed to things worldwide. And I'm just going to ask you guys, when did we stop believing in these children? These very children that we say are a problem, that need to be locked up and policed and everything else? We're just missing this one big piece. So we need to set the conditions for them to succeed. We need to invest directly in the children. We need to come to them with something that we know that they've demonstrated over and over again, that they want, that they like, that they know that they need. And yeah, that means sports. That also means scholarships, doesn't it? It also means demonstrated success. It also means academics. Roger Young Park, it means more than just a nice building. And I know that there are plenty of people here who are community leaders that would love to take their children, to love to take our children to that park, even as it's built, and say, "This we give to you. This is for you. This is our investment in the possibilities of our children and our future." Something that they can experience day in and day out. Something that they can have small and large victories in, while they are growing before our eyes. So I'm just asking everybody to have faith in our children and in the Creator that gave them to us, that we are responsible for, to accept this plan, to move forward with developing Roger Young Park, to bring hope to these children in a way that they can immediately understand, in a way that's going to lead them to success. That's all I really have to say. You just got to ask yourselves, are we really, are we here for the future? Or are we just here for ourselves? Thank you, guys.
Hi, my name is Deanna Davis, and I live at 1025 East 36th Street. I am a 17-year-old track athlete. My dad spoke earlier. I ran track for Erie High my ninth and 10th grade year. My ninth grade and 10th grade year, I ended up injured, because we do not have a track. We were running inside against concrete floors, and I fractured my left tibia my first year, and my right tibia my second year. My third year, my junior year, I finally got to compete, and I ended up becoming the district champion in javelin. And me and my team, we took third in the four-by-one relay. I qualified, and the 300-meter hurdles also I took third. But that was my first completed actual year of high school track, because we do not have a track. I have been running track since I was five-years-old. My dad has been my coach for as long as I can remember. And we have moved from many different facilities, because we do not have a track here in Erie for us to run on. We have been at East, Iroquois, Harbor Creek. We've been to Edinburgh, and we've always been told that we needed to leave, because we're an organization and not just a singular individual. I think we do need a track, a track for us to come together, for us to have support. For many people, many kids on our track team do not want to run track, because the coaches do not use it as just them. They want the recognition that people bring. I'm a six-time Junior Olympian. I am very recognized because of my coaches and because of my dad. And my coaches use my recognition to get more support for the track team, to get more kids to come out. But kids don't want to run on concrete and rocks. They don't want to fall. They don't want to get hurt. They don't want the shins splints. They don't want the injuries. And they don't want to be told no. They don't want to be told that they can't get a track every year they ask for. We've been fighting for a track for the three years that I've been there. And every time we've asked, we've been told that we don't have it in our funding. But the football stadium just got a new football field. They just got a new design, and yet, we still don't have a track. We haven't had a track for I don't know how long. We need a track. Thank you.
Sheila?
Curtis, did you still want to introduce yourself in your new role?
Councilman Allen, I had Sheila on, I didn't know Curtis was speaking, I'm sorry.
Pardon me, but we still have one person online, did you say?
Correct.
Well, let's, can we let Curtis go? Okay, all right.
Sheila?
Yes, good evening. Birds have nests, foxes have dens. And the citizens of Erie are living in housing that according to the current administration should be condemned. Imagine you visiting a $5-million park and then going home to a home that should be condemned. Jim Crow didn't work alone. He had sickle fans from the days of slavery until today, to go along just to get along. I also want to add that Councilman Witherspoon is not just spending his money, but he's given $50-plus thousand a year compared to JFK, a community center that serves both children and adults year-round. Could someone tell me how it is that Poe's Landscaping is operating as pro-waste management in an African, what was, what once was an African-American community? That's illegal operation. Why do we need an insurance fraud prevention authority, as well as an auto theft prevention authority, when we have citizens dying on our streets in the winter from cold? And then those that I said before, I can't reiterate this more, but are living in homes, according to Mayor Schimber's staff, are living in housing that should be condemned? And yet, our taxes are increasing. Could someone answer those questions for me? Is Councilman Trump present? If not, I'd like to know whose shoes are he there to fill? That of another sickle fan? I see he secured over $40-plus thousand for his own mother. Are you there for your family, or are you there for the people? Is my question. I would also like to request a federal audit of not only the city of Erie, but the Erie Water Authority. How is someone getting a $2,000 sewer bill when mine was cut off for being one month late? Where is the money going? Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Curtis, now you're on.
Good evening, Council President Liz Allen and the whole of Council Administration, staff. And I see a lot of familiar faces, some more bearded than others than they were when I left. My name is Curtis Jones, representing the Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership.
My name is Curtis Jones, representing the Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership as the new Director of Government Affairs. And so what I am tasked to do, which is, well, my pleasure to do, quite honestly, is to work with the elected officials, both in the city, in the county, and throughout the Erie region, which actually will cross over into some areas of Ohio, some areas of New York State as well. You all are the first body that I've come to because it's like coming home. It's like Old Home Week in many ways. I had the privilege and honor of serving thirteen years as a member of this council and this body. And during that time, there were a lot of things that were unclear about what the chamber did. There were times where there was a lack of clarity, a lack of continuity in some spaces. And so again, having served where you are serving now and now being in a situation where I have the opportunity to liaison with you in a very direct way, I'm excited about that, being able to clear up anything that's ever been a question, be able to share with this council, with the administration, and with other legislators throughout the region, what the intention and the heart and the goals of the Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership are. It's late in the hour. I apologize for being later than I wanted to be. I was at another event doing something similar and didn't want to speed on my way over here. But I just want to avail myself to each of you. You all know how to contact me. I will leave information, actually, I did leave some information with Lori in the clerk's office. But again, I'm just a phone call, a text, an email away. Not only am I liaising with you all as electeds, but part of my, and a major part of my responsibility in this position is to be able to bring information to you from citizens and businesses that may have a zoning question, that may have a question about LERTA, that may have a question about something that is under your auspices, whether administratively in the mayor's office, Public Works, or a department, or something that is legislative in nature that you as a body of council would vote on. So you will be seeing me in different capacities. And again, I want to be here to serve with you, to be able to help move our region forward economically, economic development-wise, but also person by person. I think that's really what it's all about. So again, anything I can do in this position, and of course personally, you all already know that I'm here to serve and be an asset to each of you. So thank you very much for the time.
Will you be giving quarterly reports? The last time...
I apologize. Say that again?
Will you be, I know your predecessor would come and speak to council quarterly. Do you have a plan yet for that or?
Yeah, I, I'm, again, I would like to set up regular times with the body and also private meetings as far as email or come in one-on-one, one-on-twos, whatever is necessary. But I would like to set up something on a consistent schedule, for sure. And again, I know this is a little bit different than citizens to be heard. If it's appropriate, I can entertain a question or two. If not, I'm definitely okay. We're going home tonight.
Any questions? Thanks, Curtis.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for waiting, too. We appreciate that. Okay, Lori, we're ready to go on.
Yes, ma'am. Ordinances for final passage, council file number sixteen-two-ninety-seven, official ordinance number thirty-eight-twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance appropriating the sum of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from a Pennsylvania State Recycling Act 101 grant and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance bill number sixteen-two-ninety-seven and now known as official file ordinance thirty-eight-twenty-two, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council pass official file ordinance thirty-eight-twenty-two by yea-six, nay-zero. Council file number sixteen-two-ninety-eight, official ordinance thirty-nine-twenty-two, an ordinance appropriating the sum of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from the sewer fund balance and will be used to pay for repair parts and supplies at the wastewater treatment plant. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance bill number sixteen-two-ninety-eight and now known as official file ordinance thirty-nine-twenty-two, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council pass official file ordinance thirty-nine-twenty-two by yea-six, nay-zero. Council file number sixteen-two-ninety-nine, ordinance for first reading, an ordinance appropriating the sum of three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-ninety dollars from unanticipated and unappropriated revenue and for the expenditure thereof in the city of Erie paving and sewer fund, funding is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Troup, the council file ordinance number sixteen-two-ninety-nine, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen-two-ninety-nine by yea-six, nay-zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen-three-hundred, an ordinance appropriating the sum of thirty-thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, funding is from a certified loan government grant by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission to create a historic preservation program, hire a historic preservation planner, and conduct training for members of the Historical Review Commission and elected officials. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance number sixteen-three-hundred, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen-three-hundred by yea-six, nay-zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen-three-oh-one, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one-hundred-thousand dollars to be received from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, PHFA, and made available through the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund, FAIR. The funding will be utilized to provide grants to low and moderate-income owner occupants for repairs or improvements to their homes. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troup, the council file ordinance number sixteen-three-oh-one, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen-three-oh-one by yea-six, nay-zero on first reading. This takes us to new business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Separations? I'm going to separate two. Three and four. Are there other separations? Anyone? All right, vote to move the balance. Do you want to repeat the separations, Lori?
Number two, number three, and number four.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
I just want to make sure.
Oh, on the PLCB?
Number nine, and there were two versions. So the one, as I understand, you're voting on would be from Second Street up to Twenty-Sixth Street on State Street.
We should probably, should we separate that then too because we might have one person who wanted to?
Oh, yeah, I think that's probably safe.
Okay.
Thank you.
So how do we unseparate it from what we just?
You just did.
Okay. Thank you.
Sponsored by Mr. Troup, seconded by Mr. Keys, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that whereas there has been a community outcry for the investment in the youth of the city of Erie, whereas Lake Effect Track Team has exhibited excellence in sports by qualifying nine athletes for the AAU National Junior Olympics in Greensboro, North Carolina, therefore, be it resolved, the city of Erie will grant the Booker T. Washington Center, the fiscal agent of Lake Effects Track Club, five thousand from the American Rescue Plan funds to help underwrite the cost of the trip to Nationals. Discussion?
I'm going to maybe be the only one who, I'm sure I'll be criticized for this. I'm voting against this. We just got a sort of budget about ten after seven tonight. There's ten names on here. We're talking, but the resolution focuses on nine names. I know that these kids do good things. And I want to point out to, I think the coach already left. He said there had been no coverage of this. Guess what? I was able to find out a lot of stuff about the great accomplishments of these various young athletes just by looking at the Go Erie archives. I know that four of the athletes went to the Junior Olympics in two thousand and nineteen, pre-COVID. I know that one, possibly two of the athletes do not live in the city of Erie. When this passes, I suspect that we are going to get a lot of other requests to fund travel or some other kind of means for other young people who are doing good things. Erie Lake Effect has a Facebook page. They are doing fundraisers. You can make donations. I was glad that Ms. Davis was here. I believe she's the one who was here and spoke to us. It would have been great if we would have had all of them here to acknowledge them and to make a plea for everyone in the city to come up with five thousand dollars or more to make sure they have a successful trip to Greensboro. We also heard from the interim finance director that we aren't quite sure how this will come from ARP funds because there's very specific guidelines. We can do a lot of good things for young athletes. This isn't the process to do it, especially getting a sort of a budget. It's not even a budget. It's how much it's going to cost for the housing and for the enterprise van or something that is being rented. We aren't even really sure how this money is going to be spent. So those are my comments. Any else?
Any other discussion?
Yes.
I share your sentiments. And I know the organization well, and I know for the young people that's with this program. My major concern is the information we receive from finance. Is this a legal transfer of funds if it passes? And if it does, and if it's not legal, we will have to return that money from another bucket? Of course, it will open the floodgates. And how do we say no to others? It's a worthy cause. There's no doubt about it. But are we saying yes from our heart and not from a legal, financial position? You know, for the record, I was the deputy director at Booker T. and part of the architectural team that built that community center on Eighteenth and Holland. So it's very dear to my heart. But I'm not sure, and no one has given me an answer, can we do this without getting in trouble with the feds, with the ARP money? Can we do it?
So, oh, I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
Can I jump in on that?
Why don't we, Chuck, is it okay if we let? All right, who's next then? Chuck or Michael?
Okay, I'll go. So, so, so this would fit into, within the guidelines of ARP funding. It's, it goes both to disadvantaged populations, persons of color, and possibly with their, and they are housed, their fiduciaries, in a qualified census tract. And so this is different than just about any other sporting event that comes along. Those who don't follow track may not understand, but the Junior Olympics is the premier youth sporting agency in the United States. Being, qualifying for a national tournament under the AAU is a very big deal. It's not like taking your traveling basketball team to Cleveland. This is a nationally recognized organization, which, as it's called, the Junior Olympics, many of the people who will be alongside of the people who will be going will ultimately become Olympians. And we had a roomful of people here about two, three months ago that said that we have to invest in the youth. And so this is my chance to say that the city has heard you. The city is taking measured steps to make sure that we do invest in our youth.
As far as, as far as the concern about, you know, how this is going to work out with ARP guidelines, in 2020, we were looking at about six million dollars in revenue replacement. The guidelines then allow for this, expect for the city to grow by five percent annually. So that led to an increase in our revenue replacement budget to about nine million last year. As of now, my last meeting with Paul before, before his resignation, took a look at the revenue to get an idea where we would be at mid-year. It doesn't look like our revenue has grown at a greater than five percent rate, meaning that we should probably expect another nine million in revenue replacement. As we've been accounting for the budget, I think, I think it's reasonable to think that we're likely to see the ability to write down forty million dollars in revenue replacement before this is all over, based on the final rule that we got, you know, just a few months ago. So I, if, in a worst-case scenario that we can't do this, as, as other cities have, Phoenix has a youth sports program that would, that's way out of this line from what I've read. And if, and if it's anything beyond with the, the youth stuff that we've done, if, if, if everything fails, I'm still expecting that we're looking at forty, forty-five million dollars in revenue replacements right down on ARP. If, if I'm just totally wrong and we just totally run out of money, like, hold me to it. I'll personally back this. It's just not that big.
I personally feel as though, since the city of Erie has neglected the fact that we don't have a track, it's not that much of an issue for us to sponsor these individuals to make sure that they make it to the Junior Olympics. Given the fact that I'm twenty-nine, I didn't even realize we had a junior track, just shows that the community is unaware of certain things that we offer because you don't highlight the potential for it here. So the fact that our city residents have to travel out to other facilities in order to have quality track is a hard line and it strikes a nerve with me. So I don't see the issue with us supporting these specific nine young people who have gone above what the city has supported them in, their mission to make it to the Junior Olympics. So hopefully, once we vote on certain issues that are coming forth in the next moments, we can make our young people feel as though we're listening to their cries and what they need to... need to thrive and survive in our community. Thank you.
My only question, Madam President, is what's our plan from here on out when we get 50 other youth organizations that come to us? That's my only question. I mean, this is...
Suggests that we, never mind. I was going to be sarcastic and suggest that we pass all those requests along to Mr. Keys and Ms. Flores, but I assume they would have to come to all of council. So we will get additional requests, there is no doubt about it. I think, did I hear Chuck correctly, that you're saying that you think this would, if it doesn't meet the ARP guidelines, it'll come from the general fund? Is that what you were saying? Or from, I'm not quite sure about the revenue replacement, but I just want to make it clear if that's what you're saying.
It would cycle through as revenue replacement. You know, it's the same way that we did the incinerator back in January and February. You know, that we have the ability to write down revenue replacement for, I'm expecting 40, $45 million. We've only budgeted for five, as far as buckets go. So we have been able to cycle things through in the last six months to best work within those guidelines, same as we did for the redevelopment authority. We've done this a number of times now, Liz, or President, Madam President, and, you know, at the numbers we're looking at for the next couple of years, I think it's likely that we could fit 5,000 through that if we felt that the guidelines weren't confident to back this.
I think, before we vote, I do have one other question. Is there going to be an, is this just going to be a $5,000 check? Or is this, is there going to be accountability for, what if it costs less than $5,000? How are these expenses going to be documented? Do you know?
Madam President, the expenses will be documented the same way any other grant is documented. The Booker T. Washington Center, who's acting as the fiscal agent, receives grants in various categories from the city already, and they are aware of what is necessary to facilitate record-keeping for a grant.
And can you just, just for the public record, can you explain, unless I heard it incorrectly, that this is going, that most of the parents on here are going to be responsible for their own costs, but this is going to cover the cost for the coach and the coach's family, who are some of the athletes? Is that correct? I'm confused about that.
So $5,000 will not cover the entire trip for all the participants. And so we outline things that we could cover. They are fundraising, and I hope with our assistance, they meet and above, reach that goal, and hopefully, all their costs can be covered.
But in other words, so there's fundraising on the Facebook page, but after tonight, after people find out the city council is giving $5,000, what is the likelihood that regular people are going to step up and add to that? Because we don't know what the budget is. We don't know if they need $10,000, if they need $20,000. We don't know, because you haven't told us. So do you know what the cost of this event trip is overall? Is there a fundraising goal? I asked you that in caucus, and I don't think I got an answer, but maybe I didn't listen...
The answer was that they started fundraising this week. When we started this conversation, they have yet to have a fundraiser.
And they, but they don't have a goal? Is that what you're saying? There isn't like, you have to know how much it's going to cost to put people up, to pay for their meals, to pay for the van.
Madam President, the question I would like to ask is, is there an anticipated budget? You never know exactly what it's going to cost. Gas price here, you fill up, you get, four hours down the road, gas price is higher. So what is the anticipated budget?
So do we have an answer to that, the anticipated budget?
So I didn't want to get this granular, but the estimated costs are, were given to the council, but I think it's, and so there's costs. So I don't think we need to get this granular in, but there's costs for vehicle renting, we were gonna, and transportation costs, lodging costs, and food costs. It's the same, they've already paid their entry fees. The entry fees were somewhere around between $400 and $500. They've already paid their entry fees, and this, and so the information actually is in front of you, including some of the information from the hotels, from the car rental place. It's just a matter of, so myself and Mr., so, long, long, long story short, that these are capable organizations, and I'm not going to argue whether they're capable of tracking this money or not.
If you add the, so the rental fee for, from Enterprises, oh, I'm not going to argue it, I'm just going to put it on the record.
Yes.
That there is a rental fee of $1,625.24, and the cost for two rooms is $1,283.16, which comes to $29,0840. So I guess we're throwing in another, almost 2,000 to get to 5,000?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, not, okay, I'm not voting yes, but just, I just want it to be on the record. So any other discussion? I think we're ready to vote.
Voting on the resolution? Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys? Mr. Nelson? Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Resolution passes, yays four, nays two. Resolution number three, sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Ms. Flores, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, a resolution, whereas the authorizing and directing the proper city officials, whereas the pandemic has highlighted the need for quality outdoor spaces, whereas the area around Roger Young Park has significant rates of poverty and poor health outcomes, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Erie will install a 400-meter competition-level track and multi-use soccer football field, with funds received from the ARP, and $2,200,000 be transferred to the Parks Department from the ARP fund to execute this resolution. Discussion?
Madam President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I wrote something out, as usual. Somebody said tonight, sit down and put some thought into it. We also know that a lot of people feel left out. That's exactly why we need to take our time before we approve this. Planning has always been key to Erie's park system, dating back to 1795, when Andrew Ellicott, the first surveyor general for the U.S., laid out Erie. Ellicott is the same person who laid out Washington, D.C., using the designs of Pierre Charles Lanfonte. That's why we have three park squares, Perry, Gridley, and Wayne. That didn't happen by chance. In 1913, the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Trade hired landscape architect and city planner John Nolan to prepare a plan for Greater Erie as part of the centennial celebration for the Battle of Lake Erie. Nolan devoted an entire chapter in his 254-page book to open spaces and recommended that the city invest in acquiring parkland and then situating schools close to such parks, so Erie could create, in essence, community centers, as he called them. He pictured Erie being as beautiful as Dresden, Budapest, Vienna, and Paris, to name a few examples. He also recommended that the peninsula become state park. Today, the City of Erie is home to 47 parks, and at least half of them, including Roger Young and MLK, are located in qualified census tracts and are eligible for part of the estimated $4 million in American Rescue Plan funding already approved for the Department of Planning and Neighborhood Development. At a December 7, 2021, city council study session, then-planning director Kathy Rosdeck explained how this ARP funding would be used to improve public spaces based on an open and transparent participatory budgeting process. In early May, before she resigned, Kathy prepared a detailed document about how this budgeting would work. She said the budgeting review team would include city council's neighborhood and housing committee, one of the six working committees I created as council president. Mel Witherspoon is the committee chair, Michael Keys and Jasmine Flores are committee members. So as proposed by the former planning director, Mr. Keys and Ms. Flores would be part of this team, along with Mr. Witherspoon, to weigh in on the various park projects and priorities, as determined by feedback from the people who use those parks. The proposal to set aside $2.3 million for a specific project at Roger Young is premature. The budget process may well find that Erie people, especially those who live near Roger Young, want a competition-level track. We heard from a lot of them tonight. They made a good case. Residents also likely want improvements to the pool and to the football field. We'll be able to determine that. But city council also needs to make sure that other parks also get attention. I spoke to a woman at Gridley Park today, and I went to talk to youngsters at the YMC summer rec camps, at Columbus Park, and McKinley Park. At Gridley, this mom, who also has a six-month-old and two little girls, said she had just moved to the west side from the east side. She told me she liked taking her kids to play at Gridley Playground, which was built, by the way, by members of the Pennsylvania Municipal League when they held their annual conference in Erie. She said she never visited parks when she lived on the east side because things were too wild there. That's not a criticism of the east side, it's a reality. We know we have to invest in the east side. At Columbus Park, an 11-year-old, Elias, said the park needs volunteers to keep it clean. Colin, a 20-year-old, said he wants the skate park to finally be completed. A camp counselor said she would like to see water fountains, restrooms, and more picnic tables there. At McKinley Park, Isabella, 10, wants more tennis courts, there's only one. She also wants soccer fields. We're very good at tennis, she said. Davion, 12, would like a splash pad, like the one at Bayview Park. And somewhere on the east side, he would like to see big slides, just like they have at Frontier Park. The counselors at McKinley said they want playground equipment and a picnic pavilion at McKinley. I drove by some parks that were really in need of attention. Ruby Shoff Park on West 19th Street, the park at East 19th and Wayne, where there are two basketball backboards, but no hoops or nets. When there are plans, partnerships can be created. Somebody tonight talked about Dick's Sporting Goods. If we have a plan for Roger Young, we can go after those grants. If we just say, we're going to put $2.3 million, with no specifics, into the track, we're stuck. We're stuck at $2.3 million. The reason we have these partnerships, I've seen criticism on social media that the city has neglected its parks. Yes, we had a financial crisis. We had a financial crisis, and we eliminated funding for parks. We started slashing it. Now we're trying to go back. We have an opportunity with ARP funding to do that. A master plan with estimated costs and timelines will help Roger Young Park enhance its reputation as a premier recreational spot in City of Erie. But we also want to help those other 27 parks in the qualified census tract get a piece of the ARP pie. People who live in all of Erie's central city neighborhoods deserve nice parks. Don't short-change them. This is not a criticism of your plan for Roger Young Park. It's give the participatory process a chance to work, and you three, we're going to be key elements of making sure we get it right. Yes?
I share your sentiments once again, but I'd let the public know that I am, in fact, in favor of a track at Roger Young. I put that vision in my mind and with the location. My hesitant is simple. I have not seen a budget. I have not seen a blueprint. I don't want to see it on a tablet. I don't want to see it on a computer. I'm old-school. Put it on a paper, roll it out, let's sit down, we talk about it. A track is fine, as one of the gentlemen spoke this evening. Conditioning is very, very important. The track can afford the track runners, shot put, condition. It will also work for the football team. It would also work for the residents of public housing, where they could, I think Mr. Mike and Ms. Sherry would create a program where if you walk a mile a day and you, at the end of the month, you got 30 days, maybe they can take $10 off your rent. That's going to be a health-type program, and you have the scattered sites over there. So it can, in fact, be a benefit. Will that track just be a track? Or would it have bleachers? I don't know. That's going to cost. Well, you know, if you're running and you're sweating, I think we ought to teach the kids they need to take a shower. So we've got to have a shower there. Now, I can tell you, I've been to a lot of track meets, they don't take showers. They just stand there and cool off and go home, and take a shower when they get home. But if you, and also, that track can be a fundraiser. Our track teams will go places and pay to participate. They make money. We have no place to make money. So I am in favor of the track concept, but I do not have enough information to vote yes on it right now, but it is in the plan. It is in the plan. We go through the process, we make it a priority, and we move forward. Yes, it should be there. Yes, we need to build Roger Young up. Yes, I think a splash, whatever you call them, splash pools, that, you know, it's more than that. We can build it up to be a great edifice. But there's a process we need to go through. It is included in the process. It's a good idea, but let's work the process. We don't want to do, kick us in the tail if we jump out of that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
I just would like to make a comment. I know that we're over here discussing about the $5 million that are set aside for ARP funds, but I would like to remind council that Councilman Nelson and myself did put a resolution for us to make sure that we do not go above the 175 in police officers. So that did loosen up some funds. I understand Michael Keys' concern in making sure that a specific amount of money is allocated for a specific park, because as a young person in this community, I have seen where things just fall to the wayside. So it's completely understandable on why Councilman Nelson and Michael Keys are very adamant on making sure that we have the support for issues that the community have already spoken about. So right now, Roger Young is not ADA accessible. Right now, it has debits. Right now, if you know the history of what Roger Young Park was at one time, it used to be a project house. So we also have residents in Erie, I, community members who remember what it was before. It was a green, empty field that isn't maintenance like it should be. So I honestly would like to just call it for a vote, but I would just like to remind everyone that we did loosen up some ARP funds. Thank you.
I would like to make sure that it's on the record, then, that the four people who voted to only fund the police, that your intention is to try to take money that has already been allocated for the police to go to parks. Can somebody say that so that it's on the record?
Madam President?
I'll say that.
You said that? Could you say it, though? Don't just say it. Say the whole sentence.
I would...
I would like to say that the funds that were set aside to increase the police force by 21 people and bring us back to the highest police force that we've had in a long time would be better allocated to provide youth opportunities for activity in the public sphere.
Madam President?
I just want to, I wanted, I figured that was the playbook, so I wanted to make sure that people are aware of that, that that is what is underlying this. It's not so much, "Let's put money into Roger Young." It's take money away that's already been approved by the previous council for policing.
Madam President?
Yes?
Let's make it very clear on my part. I will not vote for any recreation money whatsoever if it comes out of the Police Department whatsoever. Look at your newspaper. Look at the kids getting killed. Maybe a few that has died wanted to run track. There's nothing wrong with increasing and bringing back the Police Department to protect our kids, to protect our seniors. We need the Police Department at full capacity if possible. We'll get the track. We will get the track. But if you kill public safety, shame on you.
Madam President, in regards to the Roger Young project, I work in a high school, so, and I see the activities that kids participate in in large numbers. So I kind of agree with Rod Jones, who was here today. If I was to put football and track and basketball in order, track would be, I mean, it's important, but if you talk about kids participating in the city of Erie, it's a lower number compared to football, basketball, soccer. So I think when you develop this park, to me, if I was, if it was me developing it, the football field would be the main attraction there, and basketball, and you can build a track around that. But if you go based on what kids want to do in the city of Erie, in 1985, I would say track. In present-day Erie, kids really don't, other than like a Preppenberg Dow, inner-city kids, the biggest sports, and I worked in the high school, football and basketball and soccer. You go to Wilson, you see 200 people playing soccer. So if you build a football field, you can build a track around that.
That's the plan.
Okay? The football field should be the, I know we're talking track, 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 track. Not that many kids in the inner-city really are interested in track. Kind of 10, 20, but if you've got 500 football players, you tell me which one is more interesting to kids, or if you go to Spoons League and there's 600 kids playing. So you've got to look at that, too. So order of importance, track, yes, I do believe in it. But I would like to say that I think the priority should be based on where more kids participate, what do they like to participate in, and based on me working in the high school, track would not be number one on the list.
And I do, I just want to make clear that this resolution is specifically a 400-meter competition-level track and multi-use field. But again, we...
Field that says for soccer. Yeah. Says for soccer and football.
But then, the next resolution is $100,000 to, for other work there. I want to let council know that there is a master plan for McClellan Park, which is not completely finished. But because there's a master plan for McClellan Park on the east side, and I remember my colleague, Sonia Arrington, was a huge champion of McClellan Park, because there's a master plan, they've been able to get additional grants. That's what I've been trying to stress. If there is a master plan, whether it is football, track, blah, 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 then you can get more than $2.3 million. We had, I think Selena King said that it could cost as much as $9 million. If you just approve this the way it is written, you will not be able to maximize that money.
That's not true.
Yes, it is true, Michael. Michael, it is true. I heard that you went to a state representative asking for money, and you were told, "You need a plan."
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
No.
Resolution passes, yays four, nays zero, or nays two. This is a resolution sponsored by Ms. Flores, seconded by Mr. Keys, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that whereas the Erie Refocused and Emerge 2040 and the American Rescue Plan all have highlighted how important public spaces are to the livability and quality of life in the city of Erie, whereas the city of Erie has designated more than $5 million of American Rescue Plan funding to upgrade the public parks and outdoor spaces in the city of Erie, whereas Roger Young Park is a premier park on the east side of the city of Erie and it is, it has not had any substantial investment in decades. Therefore, be it resolved authorizing and directing the proper city officials and departments to facilitate preliminary site work for the installation of a track and multipurpose field at Roger Young Park. This includes, but is not limited to, execution of contracts and will not exceed $100,000. It is further resolved that the city officials and departments are authorized and directed to explore options for improving the pool and pool area of the Roger Young Park and will be funded by the American Rescue Plan funding designated for the city of Erie parks. Discussion?
Madam President?
Yes?
Is there, has a budget for that amount of money been submitted?
This is it. And I just want to say that I assume now that we will have advocates, those advocates for parks that have already spoken, for instance, Kevin Arrington for the Martin Luther King Park wants $75,000. So I assume that now we're in a mode where we won't do participatory budgeting. Forget the kids from McKinley, although I think there is one group that might be working on McKinley. Forget the kids at Columbus. Forget the place at 19th and Wayne. Forget Ruby Shoff Park. The ones that speak up are going to come individually to council and ask for money, and pretty soon, our $4 million will all be allocated based on the process which our park experts have put forth, who are the park experts on council. This is the budget, Mel. I haven't seen anything else other than this. So is there any other discussion?
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
No.
Resolution passes, yays four, nays two. A resolution sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Troop, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are authorized and directed to file an application with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for the purpose of exempting the areas identified as Zone 1, Cranberry Street to Parade Street, north edge of Second Street to the water's edge, and Zone 2, Holland Street to Peach Street, 26th Street north to northern edge of Second Street. Council authorized an earlier application where Zone 2 extended south to 14th Street north by resolution of March 8, 2006, renewed March 21, 2012, and September 1, 2016. This application shall be for either a one-, three-, or five-year period if the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board approves. The city will enforce its own noise control ordinance at Article 705 of the Codified Ordinances. Voting on the resolution, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Resolution passes, yays six, nays zero. This takes us to committee reports.
Mel, we'll start on your end. Committee reports? Mel?
No report.
Quickly, we canceled our games Monday at the court because of the rain, of course, and then it cleared up later, but we canceled that. And we also canceled them up today. I refuse to have the kids play 80 degrees and above. Now, I had some of my helpers say, "Well, they're going to be there anyway." I said, "They probably will be, but not under my watch." It's too hot. So my rule is 80 degrees, high humidity, we don't play. And so the kids, they were upset, but that's good. But I can't have a kid having a sunstroke on me, no way. But other than that, the league is going real good. We have a total of, total of both courts, we have 302 kids from the age of nine to 16, something we doing at Bayview. The numbers were low at Bayview Park, but there was a group of young men, around 20, 24, 25, that play every Tuesday and Thursday. They play pickup. I decided to talk to them, and we're going to put them as part of our organization. And they were happy about that, and we're going to get them some T-shirts as well. So things are going well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms., Madam President, I just wanted to, I don't have a report, but I wanted to just make you all aware once again, on August 14th, we'll be doing this event that I've been hosting for the last 12 years. It's called Blues for Shoes Benefit. And, you know, as you know, I'm a local musician, and the event will take place at the Big Bar this year. And what we do is we get local musicians to come out and play. People come and they donate school supplies or money, and then all the money is used to purchase school supplies, which we give away free to the community. That'll be given away August 20th. I think over the last, you know, 12 years, we've raised nearly $50,000 for this event over the years. So we'll be doing that again at the Big Bar on August 14th, starting at 4 o'clock.
Thank you. Michael?
No report tonight.
Jasmine?
I don't have a report necessarily, but I did do the walk of the MLK Junior Park today, this morning, and I was able to speak with the children there as far as Mr. Kevin Arrington's request for specific funds. I do know that the conditions of the park are in disrepair, so I do want to bring that to the concern of the community, that if you do have parks in your neighborhood that you feel as though are being neglected, to just report it to the city, because the only way that things are going to get addressed is if we are actually doing our part of things. Once I seen the condition of the park, it really did put things into my vision that young people are not necessarily given the tools that they need in our community to thrive, and that needs to change, especially when we sadly are burying our youth so soon. So I do not have anything else to add, but I do want the young people to know that we are listening, at least I am, and I hope additional council members will be joining our team who are listening in the future. Thank you.
I have a couple of things. One is that there was new legislation that was passed on dirt bikes, so maybe at some point, the city solicitor and the police chief can update us on that, because we have had complaints about unlicensed people, you know, using dirt bikes and ATV. So that squeaked by, I think, at the end of the legislative session. So it would be good at some point to let us know so we can inform the public about what's happening with that. I wanted to, I know, there seems to be, well, there's a lot of comments about the stormwater fee, and one person said that the financial report we got said just to, you know, squeeze, 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 or whatever the word was. Contrary to what that person said, the PFM report recommended the stormwater fee so that we could spread the cost of maintaining our stormwater system over all people who use the stormwater system, not just those who pay property taxes. This would include nonprofits. So we will be getting information on the proposal for stormwater fees and for how to mitigate those fees soon. There also was a reference to the Rainy Day Fund and implication that Governor Wolf can just disburse this money. I think it's important for people to know the legislature is controlled by the party opposite of who Governor Wolf is. Governor Wolf does not have executive authority to just go and spend money from the Rainy Day Fund specifically on the stormwater. So, and one more thing, I want to stress again, a lot of parks need attention. Mel talked about the heat. We know that inner cities often don't have a lot of shade. When I went to Columbus Park today, the fire department was there, and they opened the hydrants so that the kids could cool off, and that was really popular. So as we talk about parks, we also should be thinking about sustainability and the environment, which brings me to an announcement, I think I've told council, but I want to make sure the public knows. At our next meeting, which is August 3rd, we will have a presentation from Penn, by Penn Future, about how an environmental advisory council would work. We have such things in about 140 other municipalities, I think, in Pennsylvania. So it should be 15 minutes or less. We're going to find out about how an environmental advisory council could work for the city of Erie. Also, somebody mentioned Parade Street, one of the speakers, and you know, there is a proposal for the East Side Renaissance. So I've arranged with Bishop Brock to do a walking tour of Parade Street after our next council meeting. Not everybody will be able to walk, and if it's 90 degrees, maybe none of us will be able to walk. We're going to kind of keep the time flexible, but all council members will be invited, if we wrap up early, to be able to go to the new East Side Renaissance building on Parade Street to hear informally about that project, and then hopefully be able to take a walk and see what the developers have in mind for that particular corridor. So put that on your calendar. Okay, we don't have Teresa here, do we? Oh, and did I ask Chuck? I think he said he wasn't going to have a report. Is he gone? Now we can't hear him.
You're muted.
I'm still here. I'm working on that recycling pilot, but I'll have a lot more to say about it next time. I went out with the students and picked up some stuff Monday and got to see the actual process, and one of the kids couldn't work, so I literally just filled in for him. But I'll have a bunch more to report about in two weeks after all the numbers are done.
Ed Dessa, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Renee?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll be quick. In terms of the stormwater fee, we're looking at having a study session in September, September 1st, I think it's September 1st. The Stormwater Credit Advisory Committee wrapped up their final meeting just this past Monday, and we have an appeals policy and an appeals process and credit policy drafted. So the consultants are going to fine-tune that after the comments that we got at our last meeting, and then we'll come back together. And I've asked them to kind of give a refresher. And I've asked them to kind of give a refresher since we do have some new members of council and then get into the process and policy. In terms of the... I want to make sure everybody knows that the 814 Concert Series continues on Sunday, July 24th at Washington Park, at West 24th and Raspberry. From 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., there will be a Drum Circle with One World Tribe. And then at 6:00 o'clock, the Division Street Machine will play. And then on the weekend of July 31st. So our Love Your Block team is collaborating with Serviery, the ECAT, UPMC Hammett and Hammett Health Foundation, and several other organizations to do a, several community projects on that Friday and Saturday. So it would be the 29th and 30th. And then that will culminate on July 31st in Wayne Park with the next 814 Concert Series. There will be a health fair. And there will also be the Drum Circle again from 4:00 to 6:00. And then the Groove will be playing from 6:00 to 7:30. We also have the Sounds of Summer Music Series. Next one is Monday, July 25th, at Austro Apartments at 4220 Davison, 7:00 p.m. with the Erie Trombone Collective. And then finally, I just wanted to make a comment about the participatory budgeting process. So we've been working on getting that ready. We're hoping to launch it in August. That's the plan. This was approved back in November, December. And the plan has always been to seek resident input on the 29 parks that are city-owned that are within the qualified census tracts so that we could hear directly from residents about what their priority improvements are for those parks. So we will continue. We will move forward with that and get that input. Once we have that input, then we will cost out, you know, the priorities that people have identified for each park and develop kind of proposals and concept sketches that people can then vote on. And then, once we have that, we will be able to develop a plan and a budget and we will be able to go after many other grants at the local, state, and federal level to match the funding that we've already set aside in terms of our ARP funding that we received. So we're still going to move forward with that plan. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Liz. Ms. Allen?
Yes?
I just... I don't usually have too much to say, but I neglected to tell you some good news since we're talking about sports. Erie's Junior American Legion Team made the Western Finals. And so they'll be playing this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And the top three teams from that Western region, there's only eight, so they got a shot, will go to the state finals. So that was pretty cool. So I thought I'd better share that.
Will we be getting a funding request from them? Or have they already have their funding secured?
No, no funding requests, but I'll give you an update on how they do.
Thank you. All right. Is anything else for the good of the order?
Madam President, I just wanted to say that for the public notice, information, that you may see council going back and forth on various issues. And I've said this when I've served with Mr. Bagnoni in Borja. I've said it when I served with Mrs. Ruby Jenkins' husband. I served with Gail Wright. I've said it with past President Curtis Jones, Senior. We may disagree here on the deus. Once the President wraps that gavel, we are all and we remain good friends. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council adjourns at 10:06 p.m. Ms. Allen, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon?